Good morning, everyone. Councilman Nowakowski is on the phone. So we do have a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. First item is called "To the Public." Do we have any cards from the public? Next is minutes of the meeting. Councilman Nowakowski, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
And I will second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have consent items two through seven, but we do have a card on two. So on the consent, could we approve three through seven?
Motion to approve consent items three through seven.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I will ask the chief to come up on item two. And Jennifer Rouse, would you like to take the microphone and...
Thank you, Vice Mayor Williams. I believe I only have two minutes to speak, correct? Okay, so I'll make this very brief. Thank you, everybody, for listening. I'm coming here to ask that you approve the nine new Wake Up Club applications that are on, I believe, listed on page 25 of your agenda. I wanted to go over really briefly that the grant guide was changed this year. So while the Oversight Committee graded based on that grant guide, the grant guide is broken. There were new requirements made that the co-applicant, which would be our new Wake Up Club schools, were required to have four crime prevention items. But these grants were to establish these Wake Up Clubs in these nine schools. So how are we supposed to provide agendas for crime prevention meetings when we have not established that Wake Up Club yet? Now, I can speak personally about myself, how often I've spent either talking to my school's booster club or to the principal on crime prevention items. But two people does not really make an agenda or meetings. And it didn't feel right to make that up. I did speak before booster meetings, but that was not the topic of the meeting. And I'm pretty sure, I'm aware that in Levine, at least, this was a similar case. There were people sitting in offices with principals and with new school resource officers, but it wasn't an official meeting. It wasn't something that was open to the public. They're trying to establish Wake Up Clubs. Now, I have a list, and I did get to see that there were scores put on these nine new Wake Up Clubs, that they all scored over seven, which, in my experience, that's pretty remarkable. And if you, I'm sure you're familiar with what Wake Up Clubs do. Five of these Wake Up Clubs were in South Phoenix, in areas where I believe a Wake Up Club could help even establish and further block watch. These kids, those that I've heard from, graduates or people who have completed the program, have told me when I've worn my Wake Up Club shirt how much it changed their lives, how much this impacted them. An officer came into their lives, believed in them, told them to, "You can do amazing things. Believe in yourself." And that's what I want for these nine new Wake Up Clubs. I want them to start. I don't want them to wait till next year when the grant guide gets fixed again, hopefully to right the ship. I want them to have the chance to go ahead, be formed, start in fall, and make a difference in their neighborhood. These children will be your future leaders. Some of them will be teachers, they will be block watch leaders, and hopefully one day, we'll hear that some of them are actually Phoenix police officers. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief, I guess, can you explain the situation? What was the timing of the guidelines? I mean, Wake Up Clubs have been a long-time standing recipient.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity, Vice Mayor. First off, I just want to introduce who's with me here today. We have the Chair of the Neighborhood Block Watch Oversight Committee, Kami Ryas, and then we have Stacy Osborne-Frye from our Police Grants Unit. Just to kind of summarize where we're at, how we got here today, the Neighborhood Block Watch Oversight Committee evaluates the guide every year. So in this process, there were 174 individual applicants, 150 of which are recommended for funding. Of those, 12 were not recommended for funding, of the 24 that were not, because they didn't score above the 5.25 minimum threshold that was done by the committee. The other 12, and this speaks to Jennifer's point, weren't recommended for funding because they didn't meet particular elements of the guide. Specifically, as Jennifer alluded to, not having enough agendas for the amount of money that was requested. So in essence, and I'm going to turn it over to the Chair, who can speak specifically to that here in just a moment, but what the committee did was follow the guideline, follow the rules that were established within the guide to recommend funding.
Good morning.
Morning.
Vice Mayor Williams and Chairman Nowakowski and members of the committee. One of the things that happened and the reason that the guide was changed in the previous year is because we had HOAs that were not involved in the request for funding, and in many times, we wound up with funds that were not able to be spent because the HOA refused to allow things to happen. And so we said that the HOAs need to be involved if they're going to be a partner with the organization. So we established a guideline that all requests for funding must have at least two meeting notices for both the block watch itself and their partner or their, what do we call it?
Co-applicant.
Co-applicant, thank you. And so that was the adjustment that we made in the previous guidelines and what was approved by the council. We are currently in the process of, we formed a subcommittee, and we are dealing with many questions that came up during the guiding and the grading of the applicants, and we will be making another revision to the guideline and presenting it to you folks for approval before, of course, the August meeting, before the August meeting.
If it's a brand-new wake-up, how does that fit into that guideline?
Basically, we don't have any exception rules for new clubs or new organizations. If you are a brand-new block watch, you can ask for $1,000 and one meeting notice.
Okay.
Two, I beg your pardon. But if you want $10,000, which is our maximum, then you must apply with two meeting notices plus two meeting notices from your co-applicant. And we understand that that's difficult for the new block watches.
Is there still money available?
Yes.
Is there, Milton Limbs might be to you or to law, is, they can't make an exception, but can we recommend that the Wake Up Clubs be funded?
Vice Mayor, I don't know any reason why you couldn't make a recommendation, but I believe that would be within your purview, yes.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Vice Mayor.
I just feel Wake Up Clubs have had so much success in this community, and they all scored seven, which is a high rating. I would like to make an exception and fund the Wake Up Clubs that are on the list that scored high. Would you be willing to make a motion?
Make the motion exactly what the Vice Mayor's got.
Okay, and I will second it. And I want to thank you for all your hard work on, I know that this committee can be challenging sometimes, and I know you're working through some of the kinks that are there, and so thank you very much. Stick with it. We appreciate you.
It's actually a joy. Thank you.
Good. And that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are approving the funding for the Wake Up Clubs as well as your recommendations. Thank you. That takes us to item eight, I believe, which is information only. I do have one question, and I guess Chief Kurtenbach, you might, hold on just a second. You're changing to the new FBI reporting system. Does that change codes for officers? Is it something that the public uses in any form so that there's no confusion if these get changed? You following what I'm saying? I know that certain crimes, certain individuals in our community keep track of. If you change the code, will that change our statistics and their availability to get the information?
Chairman Nowakowski, Vice Mayor Williams, members of the Subcommittee, what will change are the number of crimes that are tracked, and specifically, when we look at a situation now, and I'll defer to Karen here in just a moment if I misspeak, or she can provide some additional clarity. The way we report crimes now, if there was a homicide, for example, and there were several other crimes that occurred within that particular crime, we are going to account that one crime, that homicide, not the armed robbery that occurred, not the aggravated assault on other victims that occurred, not the car theft that was correlated with that incident as well. What this will do under this new reporting is we'll track every single crime that occurred out of an incident. So I think the short answer to your question is, that will, on its face, make crime appear as if it is going up, because crime counts will go up.
Okay. So one person can have all those charges and codes, correct?
Correct.
All right, I understand, okay. I was just curious on if this would have an impact for the community. I appreciate it. So, thank you.
You're doing great, Jeff.
We're to nine, 10, and 11. I don't know if you want to have presentations or need additional information. Then I'll give you back at 12.
All right. So now we're on item number 12, Public Safety Maintenance Update.
Well, I've got stuck at St. Mary's.
What?
I have to pee too.
Good morning. It's all yours. Okay, well, Vice Mayor Nowakowski, members of the Subcommittee, we are here today to talk to you about the state of the public safety facilities and fleet. With me, I've got Ginger Spencer from Public Works, I've got Chief Walker, Chief Williams, and Art Fairbanks from the City Manager's Office. And we will each take a different portion of this presentation to walk you through it. I'm just going to provide some very high-level overview information, just so you're aware. As you know, we've talked at great length over the last couple of years about the Great Recession and the impact that it's had on the overall City of Phoenix budget. One of those areas that was impacted by that recession was our facilities maintenance and our ability to maintain our facilities, as well as our ability to maintain and replace our vehicle fleet. And so what you're seeing now and what we're experiencing is, as those facilities and as that fleet ages, our repair costs and our maintenance costs increased exponentially. You know, one of the things I pointed out to you in this year's upcoming budget, next year's upcoming budget, is that we've added additional funds for replacement and facilities maintenance, and it's really to address that. It's just like your own personal home. As your home ages, as your car ages, you put more money into the maintenance, and that's kind of what we're experiencing here at the City of Phoenix. What we're, we're at a point now where it's really time to start looking at replacing those facilities and replacing that fleet, and that means exploring a variety of different financing options. Those options also include a bond program. You know, it's a really long time since we've had a bond program. Our last bond program was in 2006. To kind of put context around that, San Antonio, a city that we're routinely compared to, they have a bond program roughly every five years. They had one in 2007, 2012, and they just adopted one last year in 2017. So again, every five years is normal and customary. We're 12 years from our last bond program. So just to give you some idea, again, historically, a bond program is used by the City of Phoenix to deal with a lot of capital issues. Our last bond programs, just kind of put in context for you, '01 was a $744 million bond program. 2006 was an almost $880 million bond program. Public safety accounted for roughly 19% of those two bond programs. And we've used those bond programs to refurbish and replace a variety of different stations, a variety of different police stations, and construct police and fire stations. For example, District 1, we, Fire Station 50. In District 7, Fire Station 59. And Councilwoman Pastor, District 4, Fire Station 61, was constructed using bond funds. We've also used it to replace an aging fleet. We've used it to buy helicopters. We've used it to replace ladder trucks. When we institute new fire stations, we equip those new fire stations with all of the apparatus it requires. That's also done with bond program, funds. We also have used it to implement new public safety technology. Good examples there, the RMS project, the PACE upgrade, as well as the fire traffic mitigation or traffic preemption system that they utilize. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ginger Spencer, and she'll kind of walk you through the life cycle of a facility and the life cycle of our fleet. And then fire and police will kind of put a human element or a human touch on what they're experiencing with this aged fleet and facility.
Thank you, Jeff. Chairman Nowakowski and members of the Subcommittee. So Public Works Department is responsible for maintaining nearly 700 buildings throughout the city, as well as 7,300 vehicles on behalf of the city. So we're basically responsible for fleet, facilities, and solid waste management. When it comes to facilities, we design and build our facilities to last a minimal of 50 years. And really, what we're talking about is asset management. It means we plan and forecast our building needs, we come up with funding for the project, we design and build the facility in order to maximize operational efficiencies, and then we maintain the buildings through preventative maintenance and required repairs. So there are actually five stages to a building. So the first stage is original construction. So as you heard Jeff say, when it comes to our facilities, we funded most of these facilities through the bond program, and those would be representing millions of dollars each year to get those buildings up and in place. Then we have years, the stage one, which is years one through 16. So basically, the lower step is your preventative maintenance there. So we're doing routine maintenance. There shouldn't be a lot of capital renewals during this time, but there may be some tenant improvements. You may need to replace your carpet, right? You may require some new paint, but not anything significant. And most things under this phase would also be under the warranty for the building. Then when we get to years 17 through 29, so this is basically when the building starts to meet its half-life, right? And so again, we're doing the preventative maintenance throughout this phase, but then at this point, we're going to start seeing some capital renewals. So at this phase, you may need to upgrade your HVAC, some of your heating, elevator replacements as well, or upgrades can occur at this time. And then years, stage four, years 30 through 49. So this is where we're starting to see significant capital renewals at this time. So this might require roof repairs, right? And at this time, what we need to start thinking about is, what is the lifespan of this building? At this point, many of the assets within the building, the building systems, are going to start reaching their end of their useful life. And so at this point, we need to start planning for the future as well. What are we going to do when we get to year 50? And when we get to year 50, at that point, we either rehabilitate or we replace, build a new building. So what I'd like to do is give you an example of Historic City Hall, right across the street from here. Everyone's pretty familiar with Historic City Hall. So we built Historic City Hall in 1928. That building is now 90 years old. In 1994, though, we said that we needed a new City Hall. Old City Hall no longer met our requirements due to growth, right? We had expanded, as well as we continued to support a lot of maintenance into that facility, and so we needed a new City Hall. But City Hall that we sit in right now is now 24 years old, right? So we're at the, basically halfway through our lifespan, and you're starting to experience some of the requirements that are necessary when a building reaches that age, such as elevator upgrades. So again, we just, yeah, we'll leave all jokes aside. We design our buildings to last a minimum of 50 years. However, the life, half-life is around 25 years, and most buildings will require a major investment in the major building components, such as your plumbing, your electrical, cooling, heating, structure, roofs, work to prevent water migrate mitigation, so you'll hear some of that, safety systems, and mechanical systems such as elevators. So, similar to facilities, we also have a life cycle for our fleet. So to the left there, you see our beautiful Tahoe, which is in excellent condition, and then to the right there, you see that nice little Crown Vic, complete with the nice green tires, which is in poor condition. So there are also five stages when it comes to a vehicle life cycle. So basically, year, stage one represents years zero to two. So this is a brand-new vehicle. We would basically say that this vehicle is in excellent condition, just like your car, as Jeff mentioned. At this point, you probably would just require routine oil changes, maybe some brake jobs. Years two through five, we say that the vehicle is in very good condition, right? At this point, it may require some water pump replacements, radiators, valves, that sort of thing, but nothing major. And usually, if we were going to lease a vehicle, you usually do it within the five-year span because the vehicle's still in good condition at that point. Years five through seven, this is where we basically say a vehicle is in good condition. You might require some system replacements to the air conditioning, wiring, short circuit failures, that sort of thing. Stage four, this is where, for most vehicles, we are starting to reach the end of its useful life. So years seven through 10. And what I want to say is, for the average vehicle for the city, the average age lifespan is 10 years. For fire, for their ambos, it is seven years, and then for patrol cars, for police, it is five years. And so you'll hear a little bit about that in just a few moments. But the average lifespan for most vehicles is 10 years. So if you use this chart right here, you can see at years seven through 10, we need to start thinking about replacing these vehicles. And at that point, it's going to require major investment. We're going to have to be placing transmissions, right? Ladder assemblies, tank repairs, major suspension repairs. So as Jeff mentioned, our maintenance costs start to go up significantly. At this point, 10 years plus, we are beyond the useful life of the vehicle. It has served its purpose. And usually, at this point, we see that we are pouring more maintenance costs into the vehicles as compared to what it would actually cost just to replace it. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Fire Chief Scott Walker, who's going to talk to you about fire.
Thank you, Ginger. Morning, Chairman Nowakowski, members of Subcommittee. As Ginger said, I'm Assistant Chief Scott Walker. I'm here today to provide you with an overview of the conditions and needs of the Fire Department's fleet and facilities. Beginning with our facilities, we actually own 78 total buildings throughout the city. 58 of those are fire stations. When we look at just the fire stations, the average age of those buildings is 30 years old. And more importantly, possibly, is that fact that of those 58, 10 are actually in excess of 50 years in age. Why this is important is because 50 years ago, we really did not build fire stations for a modern fire service. What I mean by that is, they were small, and they really don't house the number of firefighters, the number of apparatus that we need as far as our increasing call line we see. Additionally, our modern apparatus is significantly larger, so we struggle with actually being able to put some of the apparatus in certain stations. Ladder trucks, for instance, they're much larger, and they simply won't fit in some stations. And then lastly, 50 years ago, if you remember, we did not have female firefighters. So fire stations had one bathroom, common dorm areas, they're very small, there really wasn't much privacy. I'm happy to report, as of today, all our fire stations have at least two bathrooms, but within my career, there were some that still had one that we shared. So those are the types of issues we face with an aging infrastructure. We look at our oldest facility, it is a fire station, it's Station 13, located there on 47th Place, just south of Thomas. This station opened in 1958, 60 years old this year. This is actually the first fire station I ever worked at 25 years ago. When I was there, it was 35 years old then. That's actually a picture of Station 13 on the slide. While it's old, it's still a vital piece of equipment, vital facility for us. That station last year ran 8,000 calls between that engine and that rescue. So that's 8,000 times firefighters entered and exited that building in one calendar year. So as you see, very busy fire station for us. We look at our newest fire station, it's Fire Station 58, located in the southwest portion of the city. They're off West Dobbins. This was actually a replacement station for us. It replaced a double-wide trailer where Phoenix firefighters and Levine firefighters had used as a fire station. We actually absorbed that facility from the Levine Fire District as part of our agreement to provide service to the district. And then I'm happy to report that planning efforts are underway currently for new Fire Station 55 in the north part of the valley, right on the border of Vice Mayor Williams' district and Councilman Waring's district. We're excited for that station. We're excited for how that's going to help us to better serve that part of the community. When we look at the age, break down the age of our facilities, you can see that 54% of our facilities are 30 years or older. Another 22% are in that 20- to 29-year range. So what that means is 76% of our overall facilities are in that criteria that Director Spencer pointed out, that they're in that 25- to 30-year range, where they're now entering that time where we expect significant capital improvement needs. Because of that, we do expect our maintenance costs to continue on these facilities. I've also added two pictures here for some context for you. On the right is Station 6, 7th Avenue and Apache, 50-year-old station, a great station, but has really served us well, but it's getting to the point where it may be limited what it can do for us. The apparatus in front of that station is assigned to that station, and when it drives through the bay, there's one and a half inches of clearance from the top of that truck to the bay door. Not a lot of room for error there for us. Compared to the picture on the bottom, this is a modern fire station located out on the west part of Phoenix, 99th Avenue and Campbell. This is a modern fire station. It houses more than twice as many firefighters as Station 6, has multiple bathrooms, has the ability to have some privacy for some of the firefighters, also has a bay that's designed for new apparatus, obviously more apparatus, but larger apparatus. So these are the differences that we see in our older structures. When we look at our maintenance budget for fiscal year 1718, we were given $3.7 million. Fortunately, that was a half a million dollars more this year than we had seen over the previous three years. And why that's important is, as we've talked about, it's an aging infrastructure, maintenance costs continue to go up, and as hard as we may try, we tend to go over budget in this item. And so what that means is, the Fire Department absorbs that overage in other places of our budget, typically by deferral of other necessary but non-critical purchases. And then we look at our capital improvement project needs. Obviously, we have those, and so we look at replacements of fire stations, and the way we do this is, we use a very proactive, data-driven methodology so we can make the best choices with the money we do have. So how we do that is, we use a facilities condition index, where we actually look at the repairs of building needs, we cost those repairs out, we compare that to the value of the building or the replacement cost. Sometimes, it's just cheaper to replace a fire station than it may be to repair it. We also look at the call lines, as already mentioned. Some stations are just limited in their ability due to their size, they may need a bigger station or another station in close proximity. And as far as new fire stations, we look at, we work very closely with planning and development. We know where the city's growing. We want to be very proactive so we can bring that information back to you. And so we look at where the city's growing, not only on the edges, but on the urban core. We're seeing significant growth here in the downtown area, so that's significant density increases for us, but also vertical construction, which adds another dynamic to our response model. We also look at NFPA standards and our response times. Simply, we need to get there in time to make a difference. So all this information is how we're able to create a prioritized list of projects that we need and we have prepared for you whenever funding may become available. And as I've already alluded to, this is not done in a silo. We work with planning and development. We work with Public Works, we work with water, with streets, to make sure we are developing the best solutions, not only for the council, but for our community. So I'll move on to our fleet. So the Fire Department owns 617 vehicles. 89 of those are pumper's or engines, 22 are ladders, 54 are rescues or ambulances, and 452 are light duty or other single-use type fire apparatus. Fiscal year 1718, we have an $8.5 million maintenance budget. Obviously, a significant budget, but this is another area where light facilities, fire trucks have to be fixed when they break. That is how we deliver our service to our community. And so because of that, we do tend to have a potential of going over budget, but we have seen a $1.2 million increase over the last five years in this budget item alone. With an aging fleet, we anticipate those costs to continue. Looking at our replacement budget just for this year, $2.4 million this fiscal year. As Jeff mentioned, we have more of this projected in this next budget, we're happy about that. But if you look at the $2.4 million, we have a $1.2 million lease payment from the 14 pumper's the council allowed us to purchase in 2015. So when we deduct that, that leaves us with about $1.2 million for this year. And to give you some perspective, that will buy two pumper's or one ladder truck. So with a fleet of 89 engines or pumper's and 22 ladders, that type of replacement schedule really requires us to rely on an aging fleet. Thus, again, increasing maintenance costs for us. Breaking down the age of our fleet, 66% of our pumper's are over 10 years of age, 77% of our ladder trucks are over 10 years of age, 56% of our rescues or ambulances are over 7 years, and 78% of the remaining fleet is over 10 years. And as Director Spencer mentioned, the age, a useful age of a vehicle, we see that this means 74% of our fleet has exceeded its useful expectancy. So because of this, again, increased maintenance costs are probable. We also looked at the actual condition of the fleet to give you an idea about what that looks like. So we used a point-based metrics. We looked at the age, the mileage, the maintenance costs, the reliability, basically, how often is it in the shop, and the actual condition of each vehicle. And using a industry standard model of factoring that information, our fleet scored at 40% either fair to poor condition, just to give you some perspective into where we are. And finally, our fleet is funded through the general funds, and if we were able to replace everything that needed to be replaced by those industry standards today, the projected cost would be about $59.8 million. That concludes my portion of the presentation. If you don't have any questions for me, I'll pass it over to Chief Williams.
Stand by, Vice Mayor. So, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor. It's my chance and opportunity to share with you our facilities, fleet, vehicle fleet, aircraft fleet, hangar, and facility, so I have a lot of dynamics installed here. So you heard Director Spencer talk about the fact that the city has 7,300 vehicles. PD alone has 2,338 vehicles. Of those, 1,100 or so are marked vehicles, and then you see the vehicle breakdown, much like fire, we're operating with an aging fleet as well. So our maintenance budget for this year is $8.3 million. Replacement cost is $10.1 million. When we look at the light duty or the passenger vehicles, we're talking ATVs, our Mack vans when you show up at crime scenes and different things like that, and some of our SWAT vehicles. Director Spencer talked about the average life of a vehicle is 10 years. Well, keep in mind, with public safety and police, our vehicles are going all the time. So someone from shift one hands off the keys to someone on shift two and a half to shift three, so there's really no downtime for our vehicles. for our vehicles. So our average age of our fleet is nine years. Average age of a patrol car is 7.8 years. And again, remember, the industry standard is five. They're running 24/7, 365, oftentimes passing on a routine and regular basis. And quite frankly, the picture that Director Spencer showed with the green rim on it, I've seen that vehicle. So we have them out there. Much like fire with the aging fleet as well, 58% of our fleet is in fair or poor condition. When you talk numbers, that's 1,356 vehicles that are in fair and poor condition that we're asking our first responders to go out and respond to some of our most violent calls for service. So we need to make sure that they get there safely and take care of business when they get there. When we look at a total replacement value, it's staggering, obviously. $50 million to replace our entire fleet if that was the case. Let's move on to our air fleet. Those numbers are staggering also, but what we've worked on and worked through with budget and research is trying to create a dynamic where we not just fully purchase, that we lease purchase, and that we not do it all at one time because we can't have an aging fleet age out at the same time. When we look at that helicopter, I just kind of want to take you back a couple of weeks when we had the vehicle pursuit going all over the city that was captured on one of our local news stations. The helicopter has the ability to be able to manage that from the air so that our officers on the ground don't have to get behind that vehicle, which creates a safer dynamic, not for the officers, but for the community as well. At the same time, these apparatus or equipments and tools are able to show us where people have been barricaded in the home at a much safer distance than you have people on the ground. And if you remember also, we had the helicopter overhead when Bain was killed in line of duty a couple of weeks ago that showed that suspect going into the house. It's also important to note that we have to have, provide daily maintenance on these aircrafts. So it's not just a weekly or monthly. Every day, they're up and down for service and for gas and other things. But we can't have a safe city without this fleet. So we're looking at increasing our helicopters by one, increasing our aircraft by one, from two to three, and then our twin engine that's used for mountain rescues, as well as our Pilatus plane that takes aerial shots for us overhead. The cost to lease, one of these crafts is $715,000 versus the $5 million that you see up there. So we're really working hard with budget and research to make sure we're able to have kind of a dual dynamic of that so we don't have an aging fleet that ages out simultaneously. Our hangar, I don't know if any of you all have taken a tour of our hangar. In November of 2017, there were fire code issues. Understanding how critical that hangar is for our operations, not just for police, but for fire also, we had to come up with some quick solutions to that. And so we implemented a 24/7 fire watch. Aviation came up with a great idea of having portable water tanks that we can take in and out to make sure that the pilots and the maintenance crew is able to maintain that facility. We are also exploring long-term solutions with aviation in order to build a new facility with aviation's help. But we can't have this piece of building go down because we can't provide service to our community and we can't keep our officers safe. Let's talk about our facilities. That's Old School 101, that top picture up there. That's the old 620 West or Police Headquarters. It was built in 1974. If you look at the bottom, the bottom picture is Mountain View Precinct. That's one of our newer precincts. Just for reference, PD has 30 buildings now. Seven of those buildings are substation. Seven out of the 28 buildings are 29 years or older. And just a little bit of reference too, I can remember being a baby officer, fresh out of the academy, going to Maryville Precinct when it was on Glen Rosa. I don't know if you all remember that. We were super happy to have our new facility at 6180 West in Cano, and now it's 29 years old, right? So what does that say about me? Anyway, so when we're looking at building new facilities, we're looking at Mountain View Precinct as well as Black Mountain Precinct. And as a frame of reference too, so the new precincts have about 25,000 square feet. Cactus Park, one of our older facilities, has only 10,000 or 15,000 square feet. When we're looking at our facilities, for obvious reasons, the maintenance costs are staggering. Every once in a while, I see Art in 620 West walking around, as well as Nelson from our building maintenance crew, walking around our different facilities, really trying to put Band-Aids on what's going on. So as we sat at the table today, I just got a note saying that we evacuated the second floor of headquarters because of a rotten egg smell. So that's just one of the dynamics that we're dealing with on a routine and regular basis. It ended up being okay. They were pouring acid down the drain to try to mitigate some things there. But that building is definitely in need of a new facility. I also want to let you know too that we have an air pad on top of 620 West Washington that we can't even land the helicopter. So if the helicopter had to land, I would have to go over to Channel 10 or go down south to get onto the helicopter pad. So we've been working really hard with Public Works. This is definitely a team effort to really try to make sure that we keep that facility open, but it's become far more challenging. And we can, I'm not going to read the entire slide. The top picture is Maryville Precinct. That's what used to be the new Maryville Precinct. At the bottom, you see North Command. That's one of our older facilities. I remember that PD Headquarters is 44 years old. It provides 24/7 service. We have 88 years of commercial use, so you kind of double how old the building is because it's running 24/7, 365. When we think of Cactus Park Precinct, I mentioned that to you. It's 29 years old. It has 185 officers assigned to that. If you go and you tour that building, you'll see people on top of people, things on top of things. And then also, I do want to talk about technology. Technology has increased so greatly over that period of time, and we can't even take care of the technological needs that we have between and among our buildings. So as Jeff mentioned, or the Budget Director mentioned, the last time we had a bond, it cost $7 million to build that building. It's four stories, has 155,000 square feet. It had 86 parking spaces, and we have 500 employees now working out of that building. We had to take over the west side in order for people to have enough parking. But also, if you all drive around downtown, you see detectives walking back and forth to different facilities and/or parking at meters because we don't have enough space to house folks. I'll have you read that slide and just give you a little bit of anecdotal information. You do know that across the street, we have a fully functioning crime lab, so we were gracious. The city was gracious in building that facility for us. But when it comes to technology, 620 West and Headquarters can't manage what we have going on. I know the Vice Mayor toured 620 West, and you saw the dilapidation of that building. Downstairs, there are water pipes coming in. We have sandbags at the bottom. It smells horrible. So we're definitely advocating that we need new buildings, not just because we need new buildings, but because we need the functionality of those buildings in order to make sure that we're able to protect and serve our community.
And you're being very generous on that description.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So we would invite anyone to come tour the facility. We also have 29,000 square feet at the basement. That's uninhabitable. We can't even use it in the base of Headquarters. So that's a real challenge for us. So with that, I'll turn the mic over to Art, who will give us a rundown of maintenance and risk evaluation. So Art?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. My name is Art Fairbanks, and I'm on assignment in the City Manager's Office, working on strategic initiatives for maintenance of city buildings. So in terms of our strategic outreach for how we manage our buildings, we do so with two main approaches. The first is, the first is our risk evaluation exercise. So this is something we've done in the short term. So in the short term, we've met with each department, and we've talked about any latent maintenance items that are out there. And we've also scored these, each of these items with the department. We've used a scale that takes into account two different factors. One, what is the likelihood of failure of part of the building system? And then also, what would be the impact of the failure of that building system? And so we rated those on a scale of 1 to 7, with 7 being the most severe. And of course, 7 would be a failure of the building in terms of its likelihood that might be imminent. And then in the middle range, there was also that point where the assets may be past its useful life, but it still continues to perform as it's designed. And of course, a 1 would be the building's relatively new. When we talk about the impact of each one of these items we rated at each one of the departments, the most severe would be a temporary closure of the facility that would make it unavailable to our residents, essentially a library-type event. But also, the middle range of a small interruption of city programming. So for example, if you're in a community center and the roof leaks, and you could move to another room, that's an interruption. But in order to preserve the long-term use of that building, we need to make sure we deal with that. And finally, to something that no one may notice would be a carpet in the back room or something that's not an impact. So by doing both of these factors together, we can identify projects that will have the most impact and will give us the most bang for our buck in our renovation and our capital dollars. So we want to make sure we're smart about which projects we move forward in the short term on. And so in the manager's trial budget, additional $7 million has been recommended to fund ongoing repairs of projects we've identified through this process. And so just a partial list of these projects that are related to police and fire are waterproofing police headquarters, both the top floor and the bottom floor, and addressing the issues in the basement, addressing issues at the police air support hangar, at Fire, the Fire Special Ops Warehouse, placing an emergency generator for additional resiliency, at Police Academy and Police Headquarters, replacing the entire electrical distribution, which is over almost 40 years old, and finally, addressing things like the Phoenix Crime Laboratory roof. And so all of these projects are important to make sure that we continue to be able to operate the buildings, but they don't address the overall need of whether that building needs replacement. Essentially, what that does is bias time to make sure that we can build and plan and make those replacements possible. We want to continue to use these buildings as the projects roll forward. And so as well as our risk mitigation, we're also working a different strategic approach, which is facility assessments. And so this is really a midterm or long-term approach where it's useful to have a third party conduct facility assessments of each of our buildings. And so these assessments, usually performed by third-party engineers, give us three things that we really need to do to make sure we're smart about how we spend our capital dollars. One, they give us an objective condition of the major building system. So they tell us how long, what systems are exactly, how long they're expected to last. They also give us a recommended system replacement schedule. So we can use that information to program into our budget and look ahead to make sure we're planning effectively. And finally, they give us a facility condition index, which helps us also track which facilities, with whatever limited resources we have, we can address right away. So this helps us work smarter by planning ahead and providing the best value for the capital dollars we have available now that are relatively scarce. To date, we already have assessments in aviation, in water, Convention Center, and the Fire Department has done some of these assessments. And so what we'd like to do is move forward on all major buildings to make sure we have good data so we can make good decisions. To do that, it's important to note, it's probably going to be a multiple-year effort, given the number of city buildings as we move forward. And then it's also important, I think, to consider in this overall discussion, that the impact of every dollar that you spend studying a building is not a dollar that's available to fix a building. So we want to make sure that we're smart about which buildings get studied and to what extent the scope is on each individual building so we have good data to make good decisions. And so as we move forward, and in closing, the presentation was prepared in response to this Subcommittee's request for background information about the condition of police and fire buildings and its fleet, our approach as steward of these resources, and a brief discussion of the considerations as our capital assets mature and as our population of the city continues to grow. So the team is standing by for any questions you may have.
Vice Mayor?
Art, the list is so long, and the priorities.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, what we've done is, that's really the approach of this risk management exercise, is to identify, to make sure we identify which are the items that will have the greatest impact. So agreed, the list can be very long, and throughout the Great Recession, there's been a lot of deferred maintenance. But we want to make sure we identify, we put the best bang for our buck in those areas that have the most value. So again, what is the impact to our customers, and then what is the likelihood so that we can use our dollars wisely?
I know. I've been somewhat outspoken about the fact that after our catastrophe at the library, that we set up new internal procedures so that we know that facilities are inspected annually and it is reported up the chain. Have you changed anything in the process?
So Vice Mayor, that's, we have gone through, and that's part of the facility assessments. And we also work with the Public Works team that identifies those issues as we move forward. So that's a component of this facility assessments, is the third party, but then also our team is there, they're working on these facilities.
Ginger, do you want to add how it works?
Yes, so Chairman Noakowski and Vice Mayor, so to add to what Art Fairbanks has said, in addition, we have developed, with Art's help, some ARs that have been put into place. And then we are also working with departments. We meet with them once a quarter. So directors, our admin managers, as well as facility staff, and we are going through all the work that needs to be done. So we are looking at it at a very detailed level. We are getting into the weeds. We are aware of the priorities that have come out through the risk assessment process. And then we're all working together as a team to figure out how we're going to move forward with the additional funds that have been put into the City Manager's budget to help us deal with facilities. But we are meeting once a quarter. We're communicating. The information is there, and then we're dealing with it on a priority-by-priority basis.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to that, departments are being asked and are expected to do this sort of constant juggling. So if something breaks and say it's below $30,000, the expectation is you're just simply going to rearrange your budget and cover it within the allocation that you've been given because some things can't wait. So just like in your own house, if a major thing breaks, you got to do something right away. So all of the line departments have been told, if you can handle it, figure it out and get it done. But that doesn't address the overarching picture that the team is presenting this morning.
And one thing also I'll add is that as we get these assessments done, one of the things that's going to help us do is to be smarter about how we allocate the dollars. So right now, we've got maintenance money in every department that has a facility. So as these assessments come back in, you may see that Department X needs more maintenance than the department that has more than they. So that will give us the ability to actually re-shift and refocus those dollars through the budget process. And that's something that we're also working toward and expect come from these assessments.
Councilwoman Pastor?
I have lots of questions because I'm hearing bond. So I guess my question to you guys is, I know this is an information-only, but what are you recommending? Or what's the recommendation for the future?
Well, I don't think, number one, we're here to recommend a bond program to you today. I think, I think we're at a stage where, given the magnitude and the extent of some of the deferred maintenance, that it's time to start having a discussion about how to address those things. And one of the things, because of the magnitude and because of the scale, one of the ways that we're going to properly address that will ultimately be a bond program.
Can you give me a timeline?
I can't. I mean, I think it really...
The next six months.
No, I don't think it's...
Then the next year, then the next year.
It takes, it takes a good, it takes a good 18 months to do a capital need study across the organization. So it talks, it takes a good 18 to 2 years, 18 months to two years to do a capital need study.
Okay.
If I could, if I could add just to that, I think the important thing for you all to take from what we're saying is to let's figure out how to begin. So whether it's two years, four years, five years, whatever, it's your choice. But to address these needs is a methodical kind of thing. And we know we can't replace everything. We would never say everything needs to be replaced all at once, but we're trying to provide enough information for you to be aware of what the actual condition is. And then we will wait until, you know, we can have a conversation with you about planning for it. But we're not, again, not asking for anything to happen right away.
The reason why I'm leading down this conversation is because every department is asking for this. I mean, is, as we, I sit on many committees, so I see all the maintenance. I actually would like to see it in a study session, in a policy session, to do a really broad or a big look at what all the maintenance cost is, and then for us or whoever experts around us to determine then how we're going to go combat our maintenance pieces. So that's a whole nother conversation. In this process, I'm hearing we have stations or we have facilities that are older and require more maintenance. Well, I think Franklin Fire and Police is one of the prime examples of how they saved an old building and modernized it to the level that it needed to be. I live in a historic home, totally understand the maintenance, suffering through it right now. I determine with my budget where I need a shift, what I cannot do. So I understand it and I get it. My question is, I'm thinking of a police headquarters on... My question is, I'm thinking of a Police Headquarters on, down on the corner. I don't know the...
620.
620. Would we sell that property? And then, buy another piece of property? Or, we would knock it, we would gut it all? Or, what? I mean...
We own the property across the street, so we'll probably build across the street and then do something with the old building, but...
The building needs to come down.
I mean, are you doing it, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I'm like, if you look at the facilities, there's over 70? I don't know. I can't, I can't remember the number, but are you going to do that with every single building?
So, Chairman Nowakowski and Councilwoman Pastor, I'll take the first stab at that. So, again, when buildings are getting close to 50 years, we have to answer the question, do we replace or do we rehabilitate? So, to your point, there are various options for us to explore. Do we just gut the building, right? Or, do we build a brand-new building? So, those are all options on the table, but really, what we have to ask ourselves is, is this building, is it functionally obsolete? And is it financially obsolete? And so, again, if from a, if we can't get all the people in the building that we need there, if we can't meet our technology needs and that sort of thing, then functionally, the building does not work. Again, financially, if it's costing more money to put in there, then it's probably financially obsolete. But, if it's a good frame, good structure, right, and we can build within it, then that's another option that we'll explore. And we'll look at all of the cost associated and then make the best decision. But, the chief may also want to add to that as well. I mean, we've been in buildings that, to your point, you know, I was at Oxford University. These buildings are hundreds of years old, and they're, they went and redid all the work, right? And then, you have a building, almost a brand-new building within a building. But, when you get to 50 years old, at that point, all of the systems, all the major systems within that building will have to be replaced or would have been replaced at that time. So, we have to weigh everything, all of the pros and cons, and cost it all out, and then come up with options.
And Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, and Councilwoman Pastor, so, just for reference, there was an accident on the northwest corner of our building that caused some structural damage. When you think in terms of our communications facility, when we built the building, conveyor belts used to take 3x5 cards and let us know which dispatcher was going to dispatch where. We now have six consoles that they have to operate. So, I will say technologically, that building that we're in now is obsolete. Obviously, we wouldn't want to stay downtown, but it would be a cost/risk versus analysis that we have to take into account.
The reason why I'm posing these questions, because we're waiting for the study, which is what, 18 months will take, the assets, the study that you had spoken about?
Yeah, so, Councilwoman Pastor, we're going to, we have several departments that have completed the study, and we'll be coming back to you with scope and details. What we're working on now is making sure we fine-tune which buildings go in which order and to what extent they're studied, so we're smart about how we're doing it. I would anticipate it to be a multi-year approach, though.
Okay, only because I'm now 10 steps, 20 steps ahead, thinking in the future. Property's going up. Property is limited. Where some of our station, older stations are, there is no property. So, I'm just, I guess I'm 10, 20 steps ahead, saying, okay, you guys are going to end up coming back, saying, oh, well, this is what our study shows, our asset, and this is what we need to do. I think you guys kind of know where it's going to go, and so, I'm just kind of like saying, okay, well, how are they going to map this out?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, while we will give you an overall strategy, one thing that we can say, that the strategy will have to vary department by department. So, I'll give you an example. In the Burton Bar situation, we were able to relocate programming to an alternate facility while that building is worked on. That will work for some departments. When we're talking about 620 as an example, that will not work. You can't shift Headquarters to a substation, so we will have to continue to operate in 620 while a new facility is built. And logistically, that would be the only way you'd be able to do that. But, in some other areas where they have a less intense, not 24/7 usage, you may be able to sort of work in place while your either renovation is happening or whatever change we're going to make, but that would all be part of the plan.
And something else I would add too, is just, again, thinking in terms of strategy and being strategic and being smart and learning from the past. We would not want to engage in a all-in-one type of philosophy. We would not want anything to be all funded through bond programs, because think about where we are now. A lot of these things were built in the same bond program. They were constructed and opened at the same time, and all the facilities and all of the fleet are aging out at the same time. So, you want a very multifaceted, multi-layered approach so that you prevent that from happening in the future.
I think what you're hearing from this body is that we don't want another burn bar to happen, especially within our own facilities, where we have police officers, firefighters, and children and others that are using our facilities. So, with public safety, I was just wondering, is there a way to get it by the fall, what the needs are? And if it is a bond, if it's beyond the means of our general funds, then we should start looking and start letting people know that there is a need out there. I think what happens when there is a bond election, it all comes at one time and people have mixed messages, so I think people need to start hearing the stories of the 50-year-old buildings, the headquarters that's not even up-to-date with technology, and our fleets are 10 years old. So, I think as people hear that, they'll start to understand, and if we do have to do a bond program, that it's something that they'll accept. So, I think if we start telling the story now, and I think if we start looking at solutions, if it is a bond or some other means, then we need to start talking about that, but I think we're almost at that state of emergency where we really need something done quickly, and I think that's what you're hearing from all of us. So, I'm not sure how quick you can all move when it comes to public safety.
Well, we will expedite and come back.
Well, I guess what I also, and I'm hearing it from the neighborhoods, is that they want more public safety on the ground. So, that's police and fire. How does that come into play? I mean, I know facilities is bonds, but...
Right.
Yeah, okay, because that's, that's the request in the community.
You got to have the bodies, but you can't have more to the...
Right, right.
Exactly. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
We're in this like, yeah, catch 22, dang if you do, dang if you don't.
And if you remember, the 2006 bond program and the fact that we had to defer $156 million worth of projects, many of those projects, we probably wouldn't even engage in today because they're really old, right? So, you would re-forecast the net entirely. But, one of the things that we started focusing on as we moved that bond program forward, we're looking at projects that didn't require additional operating expense, like building and replacing a police precinct where you're just taking the existing complement of officers and moving them. That's one thing, that's fine. But, if you're talking about building a new station that's going to serve a new area with a new complement of officers, well, it's not just about building that facility. Now, it's also a conversation about, well, how then do you pay for the new complement of officers?
And I think that's the discussion we have to have with our community. I mean, that's the, that's the dialogue we start in the, in August.
So, maybe the first public safety Subcommittee meeting in the fall, we can have some of those answers, those questions answered, right? Or some suggestions on...
Maybe Council can have a worst study group on it, so everyone get up to speed on what the real conditions are, the needs are.
I think if the future mayor would accept that, I think it'll be great.
I, from my perspective, if I could guarantee it.
Think we get a bond, you think we get a bond election nine months?
Can we get it on our March? November, March, that's what we're going for.
Milton, you're good. Let's see how good you are.
Mr. Chairman, we will be prepared to have a discussion with you, work steady or however you want to do it, by the fall. But, once we do that, it will certainly trigger the rest of the organization, so everybody will be coming out.
You know, I understand that, Milton, but I think the priority in this community, I mean, we love our parks, we love our libraries, everything this city does is really important to somebody, but everybody wants public safety, and I think that's the top priority. I just feel very strongly, priority, infrastructure, we have to have. We always say we need more officers, response times, et cetera, et cetera. But, as you said, you've got to have the structures to maintain the people, and we have really stretched it beyond anybody's expectations. And after touring your building, personally, I don't think it's safe for some of your employees to even be in that building. It's that bad.
If there's mold, there's a safety issue. I just know that from in the liability and insurance world.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're going south on this conversation.
So, anyway, thank you for the presentation and the information, and we'll be looking forward to more dialogue.
Thank you.
All righty, next is called to the public. I think we have no cards. Any future agenda items? I think we have one already for you, Milton, and anything else?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have anything pending for June. Do you, we can wait a few days and see if topics surface, or do you want to have a June? Oh, we do, I'm sorry. Okay. So, we need, we need to deal with that.
Anything else?
It can be a short meeting.
Only once? Going twice? Meeting's adjourned, thank you.